At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, April eighth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting to order. That brings us to a first item on the agenda here, which is roll call. Daniels, Gesmi?
Here.
Hema?
Here.
Derek Lindell?
Here.
Glenn Lindell?
Here.
Pid here. Wit?
Here.
That brings us to number three, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've got a motion by Derek Lindell and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion when we approve the minutes. I didn't hear what he said.
He's made a motion to approve. I got a motion by Glenn Lindell?
A second.
A second by, you guys want to?
Go ahead.
A second by Derek Lindell. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, give your name, address for the record. Limit your comments. Three minutes. Is there anyone here for anything other than what's on the agenda? Alright. That brings us to number six, which is discussion item, Hardwood Estates Development Proposal.
Okay. So tonight, we have Mike Kulhanek here. He is interested in actually a few different development sites in the city. I was out on vacation last week, so I was just able to meet with him today before this meeting to get some ideas of what he's thinking about. So he gave me and Dave Maroni kind of a little rundown of what he is thinking of. So he has seen three possible development sites in the city of Cannon Falls that he is thinking about doing multifamily housing, some affordable housing, and I have them on a map here. So one of them is the Bartman Development on Sixth Street North, which this is not, it doesn't have the aerial photography. Here's Sixth Street. There's the townhouses across the street. We had a presentation on this property early last year about doing some multifamily housing. The property is still for sale and it's for sale. There's a current, there's currently one house on the lot and they're in, the sellers are interested in selling to somebody who would develop the property with multifamily housing. So that has been on the market for over a year now and Mike is interested possibly in moving forward on that site. So I can give some background. It's currently zoned R three, which is medium, medium density residential. So it would have to be rezoned to accommodate multifamily housing. The buyer could configure these lots any way that they chose. They would own this, this back here, this one, and I think this one. So you could configure those any way you choose to do multifamily. Issues to consider that the city staff has heard of regarding these lots is the presence of rock in and around the site and the accessibility of the sewer lines and there, the existing home could remain on site or it could be demolished and the space could be used for more housing. The second site that Mr. Kulhanek is interested in is the new O'Gorman Development on Fifth Street North. Mr. Babe O'Gorman had these preliminarily platted in the summer of last year for, he was proposing five single family lots. He owns this property, this property where there's currently a house there and this area down here. And Mr. Kulhanek is interested in purchasing all of that land and possibly doing multifamily homes as well. So you would have to, we would have to redo the final plaque and do maybe adjust some of the property lines, things like that. But, so, this would also have to be rezoned. It's currently zoned residential business district. So it would have to be rezoned to accommodate multifamily and you would possibly need some more water and sewer service lines. The owner has put in a water and sewer service for single family homes, but more would probably need to be added to accommodate multifamily. And the same thing with the Bartman property as this one, the existing home could stay there or it could be demolished and the space could be used for more multifamily housing. The third and final area that he's interested in is the Mulva Hill Lots out on Seventy Second Avenue Way across from the high school and elementary school. And these are currently zoned R two, which is single family residential and you know that there's currently just one house on this lot here. So these lots, there's four of them here that he's interested in, but would do multifamily there. So we'd have to do a rezoning, pass, possibly some new plating in order to accommodate multifamily housing there. There's considerable amount of open acreage here, as you all are probably aware, where a buyer could possibly buy all of that and configure the area however they wanted. So Mike is here behind me. I'll have him come up to the podium and have you ask him some questions. Mostly, we were just looking for the commission's input on how you would feel about rezoning these lots for multifamily, considering there's some single family around this area. And if you had any other questions about any of the other ideas, he is happy to answer them. So I'll invite Mike up here and we will let you ask him some questions.
Thank you very much, Sam. So, yeah, she did a great job of what we had discussed over the last few weeks, I think maybe over the last month. And the developments that I, that she was talking through, there would be different ideas for each one. So for example, the Hilltop Development, which would be the Bartman, that would be more probably upscale townhomes because of the location. It's just more conducive to maybe more upscale. And then the, the more down, the more central located, I was looking at more affordable housing. So smaller scale townhomes. And then the ones next to the school, that would be more family oriented townhomes. So three or four bedroom. So that's kind of the idea and the main purpose is to gauge the appetite for supporting these types of development. I've been hearing that there's a need for a lot more units in Cannon Falls as far as housing units. And these look like the best options. From what I gather, there's other properties that are available, but these ones look like the best for what I was looking for to bring forward in terms of multifamily.
Are you a builder? Are you?
I'm actually, I own a consulting company and my background is rental.
Okay.
So I've been in the rental business for a number of years. So that's kind of my background. And before that, I was an executive with a chemical company, BASF.
Would you be looking at doing all three of these or just one?
Well, I would like to do all three, but it's a matter of timing.
Yeah.
Because if one, I mean, all these are for sale, so.
Sure.
Tomorrow, my realtor could call and say that's no longer available. But I would like to develop them. I would like to do one and get that through completion and then do the next or both. Because I think it's best to just kind of gauge how everything works, how everything will work in the community and things like that. So my plan would be really, I think after talking with staff, the one that's really shovel ready is the.
The O'Gorman one?
Mm-hmm.
Across the street here?
That one would probably be most likely. Or the Mulva Hill. Because the Bartman, there's a lot of, not a lot, but there needs to be some investigation in terms of that rock and if the sewer lines can be brought in and things like that. Because if, you know, the structure, substructure is so difficult, it, it wouldn't be viable to bring in new lines. So there's got to be some investigation with that.
So the, the lot sizes on the Mulva Hill, are they large enough for a?
So we would probably have to combine, I believe there's four of them that you're looking at. We would probably combine two and two to make two larger lots. That's just what we kind of discussed would work best for them.
We would, so I, I partner with Brandal Anderson and they're developers. So basically what they would do is configure what's the most conducive with green space and what can be done. And then I would work with the staff to say, you know, does this make sense? And it could be that those are all combined as one lot or two and two or three and one, depending on driveways and how things have to logically go, you know, get in, get in and out. And then with green space and things like that.
So these townhomes, you're thinking they'd just be like two family townhomes?
So depending on the project, so for example, the O'Gorman, those would be probably two bedroom, two car garage. So those would be kind of the more economical ones just because of the area it's in. And then the ones by the school, those would be three and four bedroom with two car, two plus car garage. And the ones on the hill, I haven't thought a lot about, but they would definitely be probably more expensive townhomes because of the location. There's some beautiful oak trees there. It's a very nice site.
Yeah.
So, you know, and so I'd want to tailor that to what people would be expecting for the different areas.
Would all these be rentals?
The majority of them would be, yeah.
How do you, how do you define multifamily?
Townhome.
That's a townhome?
Townhome.
Not talking in an apartment?
No, no apartments.
Would there be some single family homes mixed in with the townhomes?
With these smaller development, probably not. It would be all townhome just because there, there may be, I would have to leave that up to the developer because there might be a certain lot. For example, in the Gorman, O'Gorman, there might be one lot that it just makes sense to have a single home or a duplex. And then the rest could be maybe three or fourplex townhomes side by side. So, you know, because, because all three of these are kind of, there'd have to be combinations or changes. I would have to wait until the site plans developed, but the idea is they'd all be the single family townhomes, more or less.
Plan on some green space around them then?
Yes, appropriate amount of space so that it's people who would have dogs or things they could walk around and all those kind of normal attributes that you'd find in a, in a planned townhome community.
Do you have? Say two story townhomes?
Yeah, they'd be two story.
Do you have anything comparable to this now, anywhere?
No, so I'm, I'm basically in the business of single condo or townhome rentals or single family home rentals. So this would be new for me in terms of having a larger project, which is what I wanted to do next.
But have, have you done this project from where you're starting here? Have you done this type of project?
Only single family homes.
Okay. So you've bought property, built and rent them?
Yeah.
And where?
Rosemount, St. Paul, Empire, Vermilion, Farmington.
How are, how is your relationship in those cities?
Very good. So I talk with staff and I can't build anything that I wouldn't live in or I wouldn't have my parents live in. And that's the way it is with all my tenants. So you have to maintain properties. These are things that will be investments for my future. So I would be maintaining them indefinitely. It's not something that I'd be looking to sell.
Well, you hear the horror stories when you get closer to the cities.
Well, yeah, I just heard on the radio about this guy who was renting and not maintaining anything and the people are suing and, you know. So that's not what I'm looking to do at all. More of building something that lasts, that will be of high quality. So even the more economical ones will be cement siding because I know about maintenance concerns and you don't want to have that at minimum. And it's better in the long run than to have to redo things.
So would you be against giving us a couple of addresses where we could do a drive-by?
Sure. Yeah. Well, one is two zero eight five two Bentley Court in Farmington.
Not that we don't trust you, but.
Yeah, no.
Somebody's going to ask.
Yeah. I can certainly give you a list of rental properties. But that's the closest one to you.
Yeah. When, when you do this and pick a location, do you usually present a couple of options?
Well, so that's, so that's where the site, so for example, in O'Gorman, the configuration can change. So what'll happen is the developer would look at what makes sense. We work with staff to say, does this all make sense to you? And then we go through iteration process. Well, let's move this here or change this. And that's kind of the idea that we would move forward with. What works, considering all the different dynamics and views of, you know, how people, where they'll, where they'll see things. With the malt factory, that one's a little bit tricky because you want to probably have the homes maybe facing more of the green areas or the trees, things like that.
So when you're developing these, you just hire the, like an outside contractor to build them? And then you manage like the rental process after that?
Yeah, well, and I don't personally, so I partner with Renters Warehouse. So it's professionally done. So I don't, they do all the background. They maintain the properties. They have maintenance as well if, if need be. They collect rents and do all of that. So I hire them. They're, they're the best that I've found.
Okay. Have you or have they done any kind of like market research or study for this area to see maybe which one might be the most successful?
Well, the, to the extent that we've done market research to see that there's a need for housing. And so then it comes down to which one works best for the city and works best for me and what works best for the seller. And so, but the, the idea is there's need for low cost, high quality rental units, especially from the businesses like Cannon Equipment and other, other businesses are looking for people to be able to stay locally.
And so you'd figure out what your rent schedule is going to be based on what the population can handle?
Yeah, so basically that market analysis has been done and for example, for the two bedroom units, that probably range twelve to thirteen or fourteen hundred. So for this O'Gorman, that's probably, that would be most likely the rent because that's the market between here and Red Wing and north, even into Vermilion.
So that makes it doable for you?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there?
Yeah.
You know how much they.
Well, and it depends on how many units and how that all works out. So, but the first thing is to gauge if there's even support for multifamily because I have to, you know, make sure that that's something that's doable. And then feasibility will be done on what the sites would need to. And then that's kind of where we go through. Does this work? How does this work? You know, how the number of units work?
I always like to see a mix. When you talk an area, you know, it's always nice to have not just one type of building, but actually maybe try to get some different, like a, how do I, what do I mean? A single family home in there somewhere too.
Right.
Like this, just for the environment to.
Well, for example, with.
Ability.
With the O'Gorman, there's that existing single family home.
Yeah, I know.
So it's a matter of if that stays or goes, for example. If it stays, then it would need to be fixed up.
Yeah.
And then, you know, depending on how things situate, maybe there's, maybe it's viable to have another one, another single family home and then some three unit and two unit.
There's also demand for senior housing in this community too.
Yes.
Then you're talking two stories. That makes it a little tougher sometimes.
Yeah. So some of the development may not be so conducive for that. But for example, on the hill, that may be, there's a larger development of, of one story across the street. And that would be more conducive maybe for a single level.
Okay.
But these are, these are small developments. So it's kind of character. So, you know, for example, you're working with less than two acres, acre and a half. So you kind of keep them similar to a certain extent. But if we're looking at a ten acre or twenty acre or thirty acre, then we'd get into the whole gamut, the whole generational, two story, single family, single level townhomes. But then these ones are pretty small projects.
I'm totally in favor, but if you can do. Have, have you been in contact with any of the landowners at all?
Only through the ones that have properties for sale.
I mean, you've talked to O'Gorman and?
So, yeah, he's been in contact with Glenn Mulva Hill.
Oh, yeah.
The, the Bartmans through their realtor and then.
So the Bartmans are supportive of me bringing forward something and then Glenn Mulva Hill as well. And.
And you haven't talked to Robert O'Gorman?
No, I haven't talked to Robert O'Gorman. He's out of town.
Yep.
But he'll be back, I guess, so.
I can give him a call if you want.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Glenn. We, I think that's something we've actually, in our little planning sessions, Sam.
Yep.
We were talking exactly about this.
Yes. Yep.
So I think it's, it's a perfect timing.
One of our goals is to get affordable housing for sure, but just more in general too.
Yeah.
Affordable seniors.
More options, sure.
Just more options, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think our biggest question tonight was how do you feel about with the Mulva Hill ones? How would you feel if we came back, if Mike committed to those ones and said we want to rezone it for say three or two, three unit structures? Is that something that you would still be in favor of or seeing the existing neighborhood? Would you say maybe keep it single family?
Or would we have to have a public hearing for any of that?
Yes. Yep.
Well, boy, sticking my neck out here. It's not really moving the way it is now. So if we can get, you know, if the neighbors, I'm sure are going to want to have some input in it, but boy, it would look nice if some stuff would start popping up out there. And if, and if this gets it going, I mean. Well, those lots that were sold out there were originally sold for single family homes. And I suppose that people that have bought lots and invested in homes believed that. Well, I don't know how many. Probably might be an issue with the homeowners around. There's, is there just that one?
So there's just the one on that side of the street. I believe there's three or four across Seventy Second.
That weren't part of the original.
Correct. Yeah, they weren't part of that development.
So that would be probably one of the issues that we have to face.
Exactly.
I wonder how big of an issue it would actually be though, since it's, you know, there, there are townhouses and not apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Have to see what they look like, yeah? Yeah. I'm sure that, that people bought their homes initially in that area. I'm sure we're going to hear input. Single family, is what I'm saying. So they made an investment based on that. So they have to be careful that those people have some input. Right. Yep. And that would have to be a, would that have to be?
Yep, that would have to be a public hearing. So they would be able to come and talk to this group about that.
So this is step one. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you working with any other cities in the area?
No, this would be my, well, St. Paul I was, but after working with them, they're, they're limited on what they had zoned. And then I just wanted to do soil borings and the owners were like, no soil. And I'm like, well, we have to do soil boring. It's the first step. I mean, to see what you're working with, plus older properties, you don't know, in the city. You know, it's a farm field. It's very safe, but in the city, you don't know what could be there. So.
I know a clay field that didn't work out real well.
Oh.
And that was a lot of money. What do you think, Sam?
We are in favor, just like how you guys said, the council had those goals that we need more housing in general, affordable housing. We are ready to see Mike come in here and whatever options he chooses, we're ready to help him however we have to.
Okay, that's how kind I feel. Mike, are you asking any benefits from the city?
No, I mean, the main thing is if, you know, there's approval and just to work how expeditiously we could to. My idea is at least is to start with one of the developments, one of the developments and then have that go into multiple. Because I need to make sure everybody's comfortable and everything's working out as planned. I mean, we've done the feasibility analysis on the rents. But as I was talking to Sam and, and Dave earlier, I said, well, you know, it's, it would be difficult if units are vacant for months and months. I don't think that's the case, but you know, you don't know until it's done. And that's why I would like to start smaller and then, you know, see how everything progresses.
Prepared for an element of risk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, you know, I partnered with First Farmers Emergence. They're a very great local bank here. And then with these builders that know what they're doing, Brandal Anderson, they develop a lot of developments. a lot of developments. And then Eternity Homes, they're both local, Burnsville and, and Farmington.
Great. Do you need, do you need anything from us other...
No, we don't. No. Sounds, so, yeah, so what I'm gathering is that we're in favor. If Mike wants to continue with any of the options, you choose the best one for you and you can work with staff and we will get you through the process.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I look forward to coming back with some more concrete things you can look at. But right now, it's just so prelim.
Sure. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You're interested.
That brings us to number seven, which is Planning Commission member comments.
I have nothing. Nothing?
I guess I'll say something. So, some of you are probably surprised that I'm here, being that I, I took a full-time job with Good Hugh County doing zoning. With some of the staffing changes here at the city and then the county losing my part-time position over there, they came together and decided that I, well, we all decided collectively that I would be able to continue on as the Planning Commission Coordinator for the city of Cannon Falls through, at least through the end of the year, so December. So I will still be the Planning Commission point person, but Diane and Dave at the city will be taking in most of the paperwork, doing a lot of the work that goes on here. I'll be doing a lot of the work from Good Hugh County via email, phone calls, things like that.
So you won't be having any office time here, just...
Correct. So I'll be doing, coming for these meetings and then if there's something that's urgent that I need to meet with somebody here, I'm available to do that, but it'll mostly be done at the county.
How sad. Yeah, I know, it is.
Anybody else have anything? Hearing none. That brings us to number eight, which is adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I've got a motion by Mr. Hemma and a second by Glenn Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the Monday, April 8th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.